I guess we're on the record.
Thank you and good evening everybody. Today it is Tuesday, April fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. This meeting of this meeting is being live streamed as well as recorded for storage and viewing on our district website. The public can participate during the hearings of individuals and delegates by signing up for live audio public speaks via WebEx through a forum which is available on our website. Adequate written notice of this meeting of the South Orange Maplewood Board of Education has been sent to both townships and village clerks. The Star Ledger, the news record, Tap into Somma Dynette and the Village Green. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, Miss, where did she go? Mr. Gershel, please note for the reference that one of the Whitlader and um gave us those that should be unable to attend this evening and with that can you please call the room?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, board member Susan Bergen.
Here.
Board member, um, board president, Thayer Joshua.
Yeah.
Board member Alyssa Malaspina.
Here.
Representative Noah Moros. Uh, student representative.
Gave me, sorry, he also gave me knows he'd be unable to attend. Apologies.
Um, how about Vanessa? Probably on, no? Okay. Uh, board member Aaron Siders.
Here.
Board member Kawi Telford.
Here.
Board member Arun Bablamani, sorry. Okay. Yeah, uh, board member Courtney Winkfield.
Here.
And board member Joanna Ray. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, school board meeting is a business meeting in public and not a meeting with the public. Often sized in may appear to members of our audience at the Board of Education takes action, very little comment and in many cases unanimous vote. Before matters placed on the agenda at a public meeting, administration has thoroughly reviewed the matter with the superintendent. If the superintendent is satisfied that the matters very too presented to the Board of Education is referred to the appropriate board committee. Members of that committee work with the administration superintendent to ensure members fully understand the matter. After the committee discusses the matters then share with other board members for consideration. And only that is a place on the agenda for discussion and possible action at a public board meeting.
Excuse me, board president Joshua?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to hold this meeting um virtually. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, board member Siders. All in favor? That appears to be unanimous, Mr. Gershel. Uh, we'll now move on to our hearings of individuals and delegates, those public speaks. The board requests that you state your name and the town of residence for the record. We'll set the time limit to two minutes for each speaker and we ask that you respect that time limit. We must cut you off so it does not appear as if we're giving anyone an advantage to share their views over another individual. Speakers have the full protection of free speech during public speaks. However, this form does not protect you from the subject of your free speech personal level or slander charges. Finally, the board recommends that all members of our community pursue the chain of command. Alright, Mr. Botts, I don't see any names on the list. I just wanna confirm is that accurate?
Uh, that's accurate. No names on the list.
That concludes our public speaks. And so I will now turn the meeting over to um board member Siders and Dr. Friedman.
Good evening. Uh, we have a full schedule tonight or full agenda tonight. Um, so we're and we have a hard stop at eight thirty. So we're gonna try to get through this as quickly and as thoroughly as possible. There may be some questions that we're not able to either ask or answer tonight and and we'll just make sure to um get those answers to the board separately. So, uh, Dr. Friedman, you wanna kick it off?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. Um, I am uh really excited about this agenda this evening and um I think we have two uh really great guests. Uh, the first one, uh, I just wanna give a little context to um this year, we entered into an agreement and I wanna emphasize the word partnership with equal opportunity schools. Um, we partnered with equal opportunity schools and I don't want to uh steal any of our guests thunder, but um the partnership has been uh transformational to say the least and we have made such amazing forward progress in the uh short amount of time that we have been together this year and we're looking to continue that partnership into the future. So tonight, um, I feel very privileged that we have our liaison equal opportunity schools, uh Jessica Lamb with us that is going to give an overview of all the work that we have done this year and um talk about uh the different things that we have delved into with our staff and looked at from an administrative level and uh where we are now and where we are going. But um Jessica, thank you for joining us and I am gonna turn the floor over to you.
Um, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanna make sure it's clear that I am conflicted and will not be asking questions nor part of this discussion. It needs to be made.
Well, by the most mean and um, Mr. Gershel, please note that for the record.
Thank you, Dr. Freeman, for that lovely introduction and because of your tight agenda, I will make sure to be respectful of your time. Thank you so much for letting me present. I'm going to be sharing my screen. Um, so please let me know. Um, I cannot see the chat when I'm presenting, so if you can see my initial screen that says South Orange and Maplewood, can you just give a verbal yes?
Yep, I'll I'll guide you. Would you not?
Alright, thank you. Appreciate it. And I will be giving pauses for questions um to make sure that we can answer any questions, cause there's a lot of data that I will be presenting. Uh, so good evening, everyone. It's great to see you. I'm very excited to present to you all today.
Jess, we don't see anything yet, by the way. At least I don't.
You don't see anything. Okay, that is a problem. Is it okay now?
Yep, yep.
Awesome. Alright. Thank you. Okay, um, so I'm very excited. I'm gonna get right into the presentation. I've been able to work with South Orange and Maplewood School District um over this last school year and I'll give you a little background background on equal opportunity schools in our work. So the first thing I wanna frame is that there has been a gap um in the United States for Black and Latinx students who are completing college. And so this is data from two thousand and eighteen of twenty-five, twenty-nine year olds in the US who have attained a bachelor's degree or higher. And as you can see, there are incredible discrepancies for Black and Hispanic Latinx um adults, some of those age groups. And across the country, uh, white students are one point three times more likely than Hispanic Latinx students and one point eight times more likely than Black students to be in AP classes. And if we get more local within New Jersey, we see that that actually increases to two point three times and two point five times um of the likelihood of being in AP classes. And so we really look at advanced courses within EOS as really being a snapshot of what opportunities are present for students and which students are actually having access to them. And so this is a opportunity chart which is updated for spring data um for students. And so this is showing right now eleventh and twelfth graders who are participating in advanced placement courses. And to give you some orientation here, um, you see that we have all of our racial um and ethnic subgroups. And where you see a bar that has a filled color, that is showing the percentage and the number of students who are currently in that AP class. And what you're seeing in the gray is the amount of students who would need to be enrolled in the course to hit that sixty-five percent rate that you're seeing. That target participation rate is uh was set this year just to see if we can increase the amount of students who are in AP who identify as Black or Latinx. Um, the participation rate would be sixty-five percent. So those two gray numbers that you're seeing for each subgroup is how many more students would have to be added to achieve that sixty-five percent rate. So we're seeing that, you know, at CHS also, there's not um full access across racial and ethnic subgroups of who is actually enrolling in AP. And we'll get into some of the variety of reasons that we are able to unearth in our survey. So with equal opportunity schools, we're really thinking about how can we make sure that all students have an opportunity to succeed in challenging courses? And particularly that low income students and students of color have the opportunity to succeed at those highest levels. Cause we know that AP, IB, ACE courses are considered nationwide um and thousands of high schools to be um most rigorous classes. And we know that that is a perception that impacts both staff and students. So we really wanna think about how can we make sure that all students have access. So when we first met back in the fall, uh, these were the district goals. Increasing participation and retention and success in higher level courses. And to really ensure that students of color know that they are cared for, that they are supported and have access to oppor- opportunities available at CHS. And you see right below that, it's just reiterating the participation goal uh for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, which is sixty-five percent. And I wanted to include the highlights so that way it is very clear that CHS has been doing work, been doing work to make sure that students are supported. And so I'm just highlighting AP Core Initiative, uh, the support for summer assignments and the inclusive drop policy, which I will say across portfolio um are some of the more progressive um actions that can really be taken to lower barriers for students who have not traditionally or historically been in AP courses. So just to give you an overview of what the first year, which we call Phase One, looks like in the partnership. Um, it's divided into three different sections. I typically align them with seasons. So the study um phase, which really is collecting the data, completing the survey, happens in the fall, moving into the winter, it's strategizing. Once we have that data, how are we gonna turn it into action? And then going into the spring is support. So how are we gonna sustain the outcomes, which really is how are we gonna support teachers and students who would be AP first time takers? So the fall phase that we had for study um included three different parts. One was educating the entire staff on the partnership, which we were able to do back in, I think, early October. The second was serving students and staff with ninety percent participation. And the third was just forming an equity team or team within the school to lead this work. But I will say when you see the data, uh, we did not hit that ninety percent participation and across our portfolio uh with the school year that multiple high schools have had, um a lot of schools have not hit that ninety percent and we have worked with that due to just the variety of factors that have taken place within schools this year. And just to give a little background on what the survey consisted of and looked like is multiple device friendly, so students could easily take, do it on their phone or on a computer. Um, they can log in and out, so they didn't have to complete it in one setting. Uh, and typically it takes forty to fifty minutes to complete. So at CHS, they chose to do it within class periods and if students didn't complete it, they would be able to complete it at another time. And some of the tools that Kobe High School received included an outreach list. So that outreach list consisted of students who identified as Black or Latinx who have not been in AP but had shown different attributes in which they could be a great candidate for AP. Along with that, every student received a student insight card, which you will see in just a little bit. That included not just GPA and test score, but also teacher recommendations, what their interests were post-secondary, what classes they were interested in, and they also had the option to leave comments if they wanted to. Additionally, we had the Equity Pathways Report which you will see data on, as well as the Student Support and Belonging Report as well, which measured how students who are in AP and also students who are not in AP feel uh currently about their classroom and just school settings. Along with the data, students were able to identify trusted adults and study skills adults um that they really just felt like adults they can come and talk to within the school. Um, in addition to student belonging, we also asked students just how would they wanna be supported with their learning and also what teachers um wanted to gain to better support their students. Just to give a little data breakdown, fifty-five percent of CHS students completed the survey. Ninety percent of CHS, CHS staff completed the survey that was done during a PD day. And sixty-eight percent of staff completed staff recommendations. So all staff have the opportunity to complete staff recommendations. Um, and sixty-eight percent were, did do that. So going into the winter, we're strategizing three different steps there. One, receiving the Equity Pathways Report. The second is actually forming the student outreach plan. So once you have this list of students, how are you actually gonna outreach to them? Our survey does um mention what students preferred. Some students said, oh, sign me up, auto enroll me. There are other students who said, I actually wanna talk to a teacher first uh before I make this decision or talk to a counselor. And then actually outreach into the students, which just to name off the bat, the counseling team um guidance team at CHS has done outstanding work. So I wanted to give you these numbers again, just so you can have that fresh in your mind as we continue on and look at what the survey revealed. So just to give the first snapshot was that ninety-four percent of the students that we surveyed want to get a two-year, a four-year or advanced college degree. As you see, that is nine percent higher than our national portfolio. And we also asked questions to students that are just based off of personal altruistic aspirations. And again, you see that students were surpassing our national average for those three questions that you see or statements. This other snapshot, which I think is incredibly important for staff, was we asked staff if you were to learn that disproportionate amount of students of color, low-income students are taking AP, how would you feel about this as a priority? And thirty-two percent of staff said this is a core responsibility. This is something we need to address immediately. And then another forty-six percent have named this is an important priority. This is something that we definitely care about. If you look over to see again, what if a disproportionate amount of students of color and low-income students are entering and graduating college, you see again that core responsibility, important priority were given, were chosen by the majority of staff. And this data point that you see right below is students reporting that staff hold high or very high expectations for their academic achievement. So I'll give you a moment just to look at that on your own. But you see that the majority of groups, Hispanic Latinx, multiracial, racial races, white, non-Hispanic um exceeded the national average in terms of high, very high expectations. Um, Asian student population was right at the national portfolio average and the Black African-American group just missed the average. Another snapshot that I highlighted uh for admin district team is why staff thinks that students don't take the AP or don't take AP courses and also why underrepresented students are saying that they don't take AP. As you can see, a lot of the reasons chosen were similar, too much work, won't be successful. One thing I do wanna highlight, um, as most of the reasons aligned, one thing that was different for each is staff naming that students might be intimidated, which didn't pop up on the student side, but one thing that did is not enough information provided. And that's a conversation that I've had with many schools in terms of um, I know CHS has a lot. I was looking at their video for AP um course night and just how much education they give. And one thing I've always told schools is that the student has not historically seen themselves in AP. You can do the outreach in the classroom or at an assembly, but there needs to be a very direct kind of outreach to reach students who feel like they do not want. So I'm saying that in terms of the not enough information provided, just to give some insight of what we've seen. And this is illustrating for eleven, twelve grade historically underrepresented students of color who are not participating in AP. What are the barriers and reasons for not participating? What we've seen across our portfolio is the top two have typically been adult encouragement barrier, meaning I have not talked to adults within the building who are explicitly stating I should be in AP and this is the reason why. And then the welcome barrier, which is naming I do have, don't know if I would actually be welcomed into this class. I don't really see friends who are in this class. Um, I don't know if I would feel comfortable and feel like I would belong if I was to enter an AP class. And then the other three barriers, benefits barrier, um, are students naming they're not quite sure what um the academic benefits would be for AP. General knowledge is not quite understanding just what are the slate of courses I can take? And school access barrier is not quite being aware of how can I enroll in AP? Just to break down what those barriers each mean. And this snapshot, which always makes me happy and I love looking at it, is for students who are in AP class, what spurred them to do that? And if you look, there's two of the options, number two, number three, which I plan to take before high school and part of the school culture. That is very positive and speaks very highly of the school district and of your schools. But the also, the top choice and the last two are really focused on relationships and trusted relationships. And a conversation with my family, and a conversation with a friend I met with my counselor. And one thing that's also encouraging, which I'm not surprised, showing you the earlier data snapshot from staff is the amount of staff who wanna be a part of this. Seventy-nine said, I would love to have a one-on-one conversation with students about AP. Fifty-eight want to improve identification and encouragement practices. So there's a lot of support on the staff side in terms of how to support students and engage more students. And right below, you'll see what students had mentioned would make them more likely to take AP. Uh, this is not unusual from the list I've seen from other schools, opportunities for redo assignments, study and homework support, no summer homework, which going back to that highlight from the school in terms of summer assignments, so that is very much aligned, peer mentors and study skills and training. So with all of that information, with all of the data, we were able to identify two hundred and twenty-five students who would identify as Black and or Latinx who would be first time ta- AP test takers, or I shouldn't say test takers, AP takers. Uh, from there, I was able to create eleven outreach lists. And you're probably wondering, you know, what were these lists? You know, what was the theme or breakdown for the list? My focus was students preferred outreach method. So for example, I created a list that was solely from students who said, you could just sign me up. Here in the class I'm interested in, I mean, I can talk to my counselor really quickly, but you could just auto enroll me and I'd be okay with that. Um, I created a list that was for students who specifically named, I wanna have a one-on-one conversation with my trusted adult. There are other students who had said, I would like to review, which usually means I would like to actually meet with a guidance counselor and talk about what my options are. And the outreach list itself is very helpful for guidance, because you see, you could see a list of two hundred and twenty-five students that get very overwhelmed where the list really can give you um a specific focus to work through your outreach plan. So this is an example of what the student insight cards actually look like. Typically, the data within a school that you have most available to you is GPA, test score. One thing that teachers, guidance counselors, admin have really enjoyed about the student insight cards is one getting to learn what students' post-secondary interests are, what they would like to do, as well as naming who in the building do they really identify as their trusted adult, what's courses they're really interested in, as well as seeing the teacher recommendations and learning from them directly why they have not enrolled in AP. So we're gonna see a few of those insight cards in just a moment. Like this first student. Uh, this is a tenth grader and as you can see, they would like to get a bachelor's degree. And their career interests like vary, which is very typical right now for high school, but you see that they named a trusted adult. See, they have three teacher recommendations. That's what those apples signify. And they're interested in English and history and specifically history for AP and they have a three point nine GPA. We also in our survey, um, asked questions that could also reveal mindsets that students have. So if you look right over here for that learning mindsets and skills section, there are seven skills, learning mindsets that can be identified and the student has all seven of them. Or they would consider taking AP, cause they feel like their classes aren't quite adequate for their prep um currently for college. And on the other side, you see what they reported as barriers, which all of the barriers were listed for the student of why they have not enrolled in AP. And specifically, I wanna point out, um, not knowing enough about AP classes, feeling like it might be too much work. And also what they're saying, I might be more willing to take AP if I had access to help from other students who had had the class before. Um, I knew I wouldn't have homework over the summer. I had more information about why I should take AP. The next card, it's another tenth grader. They want an advanced degree. They listed two trusted adults and as well as a study skill support, which is one of the same people. They're interested in marine biology. They also really enjoy languages, three teacher recommendations, four point three GPA. I see that there are exactly six of the seven learning mindsets identified and the reported barriers is college belonging and school access. And I wanted to include an insight card so you can see what one looks like if a student did not take the survey. So fifty-five percent of students took the survey. So you see that there is still um a sizable part of the student population that did not. So if a student did not take the survey, that would not exclude them from getting onto a outreach list. So what you would only see is teacher recommendations and the data, which would be a GPA uh or test score. And so while with the student, we don't have as much information about what their goal or career interests are, we do see that along with their academic data, there are four staff advocates who said that the student would do really well in AP. So once we had all this information, I was able to meet um twice with CHS team. I was able to meet with Dr. Friedman and Ms. Botner, as well as uh Principal Sanchez. And then I had a separate meeting with the counseling team, because it's very important knowing that counseling is doing a lot of the work and actually had started already speaking to students about their courses for next year that one, they had all of this information and really felt set up for success to utilize these new tools that they now have. So counseling team decided they were gonna meet with each grade like they always do. They had dedication to the outreach list. I have to say that within my portfolio of schools, um, I have only seen exceptional work from the guidance team of really diving into those outreach lists, asking me questions, making sure that they truly understood how to use the tools most effectively. School-wide assemblies and AP course nights had taken place. Also, I was able to talk with the teachers about trusted adults uh by doing a training and they were thrilled to see their names on lists from students and also really took it seriously to have conversations uh with students who chose them as a trusted adult. So now we're in the support phase. We're in step three. Right now, we've been tracking enrollment progress, so there are five course uploads um that have been happening since early or late February. We have one more that's coming on April eighth. So I don't have the finalized numbers for you, but I have a snapshot of what we've done so far. Once that is complete, knowing that April eighth um will be our last course upload, what we'll be focusing on are the outreach strategies um as necessary, if there's additional ways to include students, but the bulk of this phase is thinking about how to support students who would be first time AP takers as well as staff. I was able to meet with staff about two weeks ago where our training was solely about student belonging and supports. So staff were able to brainstorm in small groups and breakout rooms, what they think would be really excellent ideas to make sure that students felt supported in the summer before they started AP courses and also how to support them throughout the school year, which is great because it also um adds to the list that I know guidance and admin have been doing already for students. So I wanted to show you, um, first where we are right now. This was the last course upload, so you see that eighty-five percent of course requests received. And these are the breakdown. So we've been focusing on Black, African-American and Hispanic Latinx groups. And so sixty-five percent is our target participation goal. We see that Hispanic Latinx group is at sixty-three percent and that two is representing two students who would put it up at sixty-five percent. And the Black African-American student group is at forty-nine percent with thirty-two students needed to get to that sixty-five percent rate. So knowing that April first was the deadline, we really focused on what are targeted lists and outreach lists that we can work on. So for example, feedback that gave was who is on that auto enrollment list and said, sign me up, please? That either has not completed their course enrollment or might have said no, to get some more information and get some clarity. So seeing this chart, you might be wondering from the previous chart, unless you have my presentation in front of you, what were the previous numbers and how does it stack up? So let's go to that, because there has been exceptional growth. And I've always said when you focus within schools and in education on the most marginalized and vulnerable students in your population, then the entire student body will benefit from that. So this is what our current course enrollment snapshot looks like for students who will be in advanced placement courses. And as you can see, every racial and ethnic group increased. And focusing on our targeted students, which was our Black and African-American and Hispanic Latinx groups, we see that there's a nineteen percent increase uh within our Black African-American student group and also an eighteen percent increase with our Hispanic and Latinx student group. Uh, which is among the highest I've seen so far in my portfolio and I, within this partnership, I have to say that from And I, within this partnership, I have to say that from district admin to our school staff, to our guidance team, it has been a all-hands-on-deck effort, as well as the amount of care and empathy that has been shown to making sure that students um, are outreach to and feel comfortable having conversations with adults, and feel excited to step out of their comfort zone and enter a class they maybe have never considered, or that they might have been nervous to, or didn't think they saw themselves in it. So if you look at that very last column here, and this is subject to change, as this was at eighty-five percent of course requests received, um, the amount of students of color who will be in AP courses in the fall will increase from forty percent as of fall twenty-twenty-one, yes, to fall twenty-two. It will be fifty-seven percent, which is incredible growth within a school year. And so with that growth, you have to think of, how are we gonna make sure students are supported? Because I will say, it's not just about first-time AP takers, any student who's ever taken AP needs support and needs to feel support, um, as they are completing the course or having multiple courses that they're taking. So AP support requests, um, has been something that I've talked to guys about, as well as revised drop request guidelines. Camp AP, um, has existed at CHS, as well as Phase Two, which is year two of the partnership, focuses solely on student belonging. So student belonging in terms of having focus groups regarding student attrition, as well as being able to have groups with other schools who are also in Phase Two and just beyond, to hear about what strategies have worked out very well to, one, when you have such an increase to sustain that student growth and sustain the amount of students that you're able, um, to outreach to and bring into the program. And so I wanted to talk about what the next steps are, which is, once April eighth comes along and I am able to give that final data report to the team, we're gonna start working on our student support plan. What are we gonna have in place to support the new students who are going to be in AP this fall? And with Phase Two, just giving you a little specifics of what that consists of, name of focus groups, as well as team workshops about student belonging, um, as well as coming up with a really strong belongings and supports rich plan. Power and reach target students at all aspects to make sure that they are really feeling like they are gonna be in AP, and they're gonna cover it. So I just talked for a very long time, and I talked quickly to respect your time. So I don't know if we have time for questions, I will pause myself to hear if you can.
Yes, we most certainly do. You did talk quickly, but it was great.
Thank you, thank you very much for that. Um, I am, I made the presumption that all of us have questions. So I, um, broke out the trusty randomizer while we were, um, speaking. So, uh, I'm going to start with Board Member Telsford, and then Board Member Valamani.
Um, should we ask just one question, or just keep it moving, or I have multiple questions that I asked?
Ask one, um, and if we still have some, we can try squeezing another round, but as Board Member Siders says, we do have a packed agenda.
Okay, I guess, I saw there's a lot of, um, I guess, one of the things I saw of students saying was that they didn't get enough information for the reasons why they didn't take AP courses. And I was wondering if that's synonymous with, in, uh, the lack of adult encouragement. So, I want to know, I guess, what are the focuses that we'll have on teachers in terms of their interactions with students, I guess? Because I guess one of the things that was in the, what students, um, that did take APs were, it was they had encouragement from counselors and friends, but then what about the teacher encouragement? Uh, I want to know if there's gonna be a focus on that.
Yes, that's a great question. Um, one thing that I worked with Principal Sanchez on was, one, students will always respond to other students, so seeing that that was in the top five, I was like, we need to have the AP students involved in this, and there are AP students who said, yes, I would like to help plan an assembly, we can do a student panel. Uh, but on the teacher's side, during our trusted adult training, it had to be emphasized that there are students who specifically chose you. And I don't know if you've had a conversation with them about post-secondary plans, advanced placement, but these are students who saw the whole list of staff and specifically want to have that conversation with you, and you need to take that as an honor, and really hold yourself to having that conversation with them. Because they were very intentional in making sure that it was your name that they chose. Additionally, one thing that's really important with adults, um, is that we actually have like lesson plans as well, um, and blurbs that schools can choose if they want to use it or not, but to make sure that if you want to outreach to the maximum amount of students, you have to really align with your staff. Because your staff are the ones who are with students every day. So that has been a suggestion that was given of really making sure teachers are able to give announcements, that departments are able to highlight what type of courses they have and bring in students. I have one teacher in particular, um, who teaches AP psychology, who is very intentional and asked if she could have a specific list of students who expressed interest in AP psychology, which I could do. And from there, um, was brainstorming, creating their very own, like, AP psychology, uh, small group assembly or like table, so that way students could come up that they already were interested, and actually follow through with the conversations with students.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Uh, Board Member Valamani, and then Board Member Wright.
Um, a data clarification question, of the two-twenty-five first-time AP takers, how many were students of color? And, um, the real question is for the outreach that you list that you're creating, have all the students who've taken, who have AP comparable scores and star, have they signed up for an AP? Because that would mean, there would be a direct correlation there, that would be an easy, low-hanging fruit to achieve.
Two great questions. So, in terms of the list, I believe that it is exactly from our data team, ninety-eight percent of students identify as students of color, who should be on the list at minimum. The second question is for how many students who have the AP comparable, we will have the official numbers after that last course upload. Because some students hadn't submitted theirs yet, and there were some other students, uh, who, for example, might have said no, where it's like, you might need to just check in with that student to see and actually get some clarification as to why. Um, so I can actually give that data point within the next week of official numbers for that.
I would imagine that to be very high, I mean, I would expect that to be very high.
Yes, we will see, we will see. Um, one thing that is interesting from just the different high schools I've, I work with is, I feel like the biggest indicator on if students will actually enroll in a course is really the specific outreach that they had. Um, I, and I, and saying that, I would say the adult interactions that they've had, and if there was strong student involvement, like, one suggestion I gave was, if students are able to visit their AP courses that they're interested in, that could be a game changer. Or if students are actually able to talk to AP students who are already in those courses, that's a game changer too. Um, but it's been interesting that with test scores and GPA, haven't been a huge indicator, at least. We'll see when I get these final numbers, if I can not say that about CHS, but yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Board Member Wright, and then Board Member Bergen.
Uh, yes, Howery, thank you very much, uh, for your presentation. Um, I'd like to know, um, you know, we only had fifty-five percent of the students at Columbia High School uh, to do the survey. Um, our target was ninety percent, and fifty-five percent is a small amount. Uh, can you tell me, um, how that happened, why it wasn't built into the schedule, or, you know, what happened, you know, that we only had fifty-five percent of these, uh, uh, students to participate?
Yes, uh, I can tell you what I know, which is, um, typically, we suggest like a two-week window, that's the most helpful, um, especially for schools that are just large. Um, and that often requires coordination of a variety of sort that schools typically know best. Some might choose to do a department-wide thing, where every, every student has to take an English class, so English is gonna be our designated course for this, um, or et cetera. So it was carried out within two weeks, and for what I know was that it was tricky to get, um, some other students to take it past those two-week period. Uh, I think Principal Sanchez, and honestly, would know much more than I would. Um, but I will say this year, our goal is always ninety percent, and nationally, we've had to work with a school and say, does seventy percent work for you? Does eighty-five percent work with you? Because COVID was kind of really playing with, um, school plans in terms of having students in the building, um, and being able to implement the survey. The good thing is that every year of the partnership, the survey is implemented. So a goal for this upcoming school year is to get that number up, because they will have to take that survey again.
Yeah, Jess, it's Dr. Friedman, I, I can add a little more context to Board Member's question. Um, I, I can't remember, and I was just sitting here trying to think of the exact reason, I can't remember if it was weather-related or COVID, and I don't know, what, 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 we shut down the one day that we were going to give the survey.
It was, I believe we ended up with a snow day or
Was it a snow day?
Like that, and so we had it planned on that day, and then we had a snow day called, or some day off was called, I don't know if it was, for exactly what it was, but I think it was, I think it was the snow day.
And then we circled back around, and we tried several times. Um, and we're, we had it set up, where, where I believe we were gonna do it in social studies classes. And, and Jess, correct me if I'm wrong, we, we did it that last time, thinking that we could really get a big spike in the number, and we didn't get as big a spike as we had hoped.
No, I think that second round, previous to the second round, I think it was just at like fifty, fifty-one percent. And then, yeah, with that second round, it went up to that fifty-five percent that you're seeing.
Yeah, because we had met, and then we kind of planned on, we figured, I think, social studies, we thought we would get the most impact, uh, we're, we're, or, I think that's what it was, and we targeted that, where every student that was there would be able to, that didn't take the survey, could take the survey, and we only went up another four percent. We were anticipating double digits, and, and for whatever reason, just attendance-wise or whatever, we just didn't get the spike that we had hoped, so, um, we're continuing to think about the best way possible to get that number up. We were very proud of our staff, our, our night, we reached a ninety percent threshold pretty quickly. I mean, it, 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 it went up pretty significantly, we gave them some time, and, and the turnaround from the staff, uh, you know, I, I wanted to be, you know, publicly noted that it was, uh, pretty impressive that, that they got that back to us in a timely manner.
Along with, um, the percentage who did staff recommendations, and keeping in mind that staff who take the survey are, are just including instructional teachers, it includes, um, folks who work in administration. It's also including teachers assistants, et cetera, so some people might not feel as comfortable giving staff recommendations, um, as others, but the sixty-five percent was really helpful, because that does impact students who might not take in the survey, but they have those staff recommendations. But the goal for next year is to get more students to take it.
Well, so we don't really have a, a, a true sample of, of, um, students, um. Um, when I was viewing it earlier, I saw staff numbers, and they were not at ninety, but staff, I'm not worried about staff so much i- in terms of this, I'm worried about kids getting into these AP classes. And we know with staff, in terms of staff, students have a tendency to, to relate more to people who look like them. Uh, so that's maybe an area that, you know, we can start, but the bottom line is, I still don't understand why, you know, it wasn't answered clearly for me, uh, why we only got fifty-five percent participation, uh, and we know what fifty-five means.
Thank you. Um, Board Member Bergen, and then Board Member Wakefield.
Thank you. Um, I had a couple of questions. The first one was, if anything, um, special in terms of outreach is planned for the forty-five percent that did not participate in the survey? And the second is to ask, um, if we have demographic and other information about students who did not have a trusted adult in the building, and if there's anything planned to do with that list, both, um, in terms of academic support and in terms of social emotional support.
Great question. So for the, can you repeat your first question? I want to make sure I answer it all first.
Um, if any outreach is planned for the forty-five percent that did not participate in the survey?
Yes, so the forty-five percent, um, who didn't take the survey, were not excluded at all from the outreach list. Um, because we understand that that would be a barrier if we did that. So they are all, like, so students who did not take the survey, like you saw with that last insight card, are included. Is it harder for guidance to get information looking at the insight card? Yes, but I was like, they have to be included. The second about the demographic data, so within the portal, which holds the information of students, um, guidance, district team, admin can see students who did not choose a trusted adult, and that can also be sorted, and, and that also can be sorted within the list that already exists. So they can click a tab and see this student has a trusted adult versus the student does not. Um, and can outreach specifically, because their counselors are also included right next to that. So you see the trusted adults who are listed, or not listed, and then you see the counselor as well. As well as like, what classes they're trying to take and et cetera. So there's a lot of different data pieces that if you're noticing, here's a student who did not name a trusted adult, but this student is also naming that they would be interested in outreach with a one-on-one conversation, then we can easily be like, counselor, this is a conversation you need to have, or counselors might notice, here's a teacher that they have that could be a good fit for them to talk to, because they already have this class with this teacher, or et cetera. So I definitely talked to guidance team about, if you see a student does not have a trusted adult, there are ways that you can specifically outreach to them, um, including bringing adult in, or really focusing on your conversation with counselor, as well as what kind of conversations can they have with current AP students or friends?
Thank you. I mean, I guess, it's good to know that we have that information. I'm still curious to see if there's any, um, specific plans for, for doing something with it, um, outside of this AP process, because it's so important.
It's very important, yeah, and I think with the student support plan that we need to come up with, um, has to include the acknowledgement that there are students in the building who don't have a trusted adult, and what is the support that needs to happen in the summer, and also just period within school culture to increase that.
Thank you. Board Member, um, Wakefield, and then Board Member Siders.
Hi, thanks Jessica for the great presentation. I thought the, um, the data that you shared was fascinating, in particular, hearing from the students directly about what supports would really enhance their experience or make it more likely for them to succeed. I think one that really stands out is the idea of students, um, asking for the ability to either make up or redo assignments, because I know that's something that we've talked about in this committee, um, outside of AP specifically, and so I just wanted to lift that up. Um, my question sort of builds off Board Member Bergen's, in that, um, while I understand that the sort of primary goal of the partnership between the district and EOS is really focused on increasing, or, or decreasing the disparity um, in our AP enrollment, but I'm, you know, struck by the fact that, um, the insight cards specifically offer so much rich student data, um, that really is, uh, you know, quantitative, but also extremely qualitative in nature, and, and data that the district and the staff wouldn't otherwise receive. And so I'm curious, um, where EOS has, you know, tinkered or piloted in other districts with using these insight cards, not just to increase AP enrollment, but for, say, you know, in our district, we're really struggling with a persistent disparity in the number of our Black and Brown students who are failing classes, uh, year over year, semester over semester. And so I'm curious how you guys have, um, used any of this insight card data to be able to also address disparities on, you know, another end of the academic spectrum.
Yeah, I could go on about this, with the schools that we've worked with, so I will go off of what's on the top of my head. And I can definitely send you some more, um, ideas, because there are definitely quite a few directors, uh, partnership directors who've talked about how schools have used the data for a wide variety of things, particularly going from that last question about school culture, and how are students belonging, who might not want to take AP, which is completely fine. Um, so one thing that came to mind immediately was thinking about, um, perception, so there's like more data on perceptions on AP classes versus standard classes. Um, so one school Um, so one school that I know of had created additional space like focus groups in order for teachers to kind of unpack what they were saying of their perceptions of AP versus not. Um, I know schools have definitely done a lot of individualized um, focus group work with students. So like, for example, Phase Two has a focus group about teacher, about nutrition, student nutrition. What, what's made you not like be an AP anymore? What does that look like? Also, students naming uh, within focus groups, if you might not want to be an AP, what would you like to see within your school that you feel like would support you as a student outside of AP, outside of advanced courses, period? Um, and I think a lot of the suggestions that I have heard of data being used outside of just like AP realm has really focused on student voice and also focused on community voice. When do families feel, especially more marginalized families within school communities and also students? Uh, there's been a lot of, I've had conversations where folks have brought up, well, how can we support students who um, might not have an interest in AP courses? Have conversations with them about what they would like to do. Like, what do they want to see within their school? How are we giving them advocacy and empowerment within their building? So those are, that's what's coming at the top of my head and I want to get more granular and provide you with some more information because there has been schools who have done some really great things. And I want to make sure you guys have that. So I'll do some research and email it out in some ways if you have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Siders.
Hello. Thank you very much for the presentation.
No problem.
Um, okay, so and I'm, I'm struggling to formulate this, this question, but we, we, we have a culture in our schools around the AP classes where, yes, the work is rigorous, but I also feel like sometimes staff makes it extra difficult. And, 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 and by that, I mean, um, you know, some of the feedback you received about students was about the work being hard. About as, there was one person, I think, who said they didn't want to do work over the summer. And so it, this culture that we have around AP, it seems to be that we, we accept this culture of making it difficult as a way of preparing our students for the real world and a real world, of course, meaning college. But when you get to college, it's a more nurturing environment because of course you're paying. They, they want to make sure you keep coming back. But yet, at the, at the high school level, it's, it's either, either you can handle this or you can't. It's almost, it almost sometimes feels like a weeding out process. And so how do we encourage students who normally wouldn't take AP to take an AP class, knowing that there's this culture that almost feels like a failure culture, uh, you know, the strongest will survive in our schools. And if you're not strong, you're not going to make it. And how do we make that more of a nurturing, I want everybody to succeed in this class? I don't want to weed out students.
Oh, that's a great question. Um, one, that's something we're going to be digging into heavily for that student support plan. The second thing um, I would say is that that is not a unique thing at all. I think about my portfolio of schools and that comes out a lot um, explicitly and implicitly regarding AP IBES courses. Uh, which can often are just barriers. They're just barriers to students. I'm thinking about when I was in high school, no, I think the number one perception that is told about AP, it is so much work. It is so much work. So you have students who understandably might be like, oh, I don't know if I can do all this. I, I have a good GPA. I don't want to mess that up. I have like other priorities that I have outside of school or like my extracurriculars, like I, it seems like a lot. Instead, when there could be, it's, it's like a deficit mindset, like this is either going to make you really great or you're just going to have to leave the class. Or a school might, like, class might not just be for you. When instead, um, overwhelmingly, we can look at advanced courses and say, this is a way for you to creatively express your theories and thoughts on a subject you're interested in. Because AP course doesn't necessarily have a bearing on the AP test and vice versa. Like, those are two very different things. Um, and I think oftentimes we look at AP um, in this way that it's just ends up being gatekeeping and keeps students who want to express their minds um, in a variety of diverse ways out and they tend to be black and brown. Um, and often it's by design. And so something that is incredibly important to the success of partnership in EOS is being able to truly look at school policy. And I know summer assignments comes up in every portfolio I have seen for students, every single one. And I've thought about it, like, if I do this essay in the summer, is this really indicative of the work I can do in August? Like, that's, that's a question that people have to answer for themselves. Um, but that doesn't happen in college, like you're saying, like, they don't give summer assignments to prep you for fall semester. That doesn't happen. So I think that that is when school policy and theory comes together. And that's why we encourage the teams that work on it and the schools to come from a variety of roles, not just from admin or guidance. But you need to include teachers. You need to include teachers from a wide span of disciplines. You need to include teachers who don't teach AP. To really get an accurate depiction of your school to bring diverse opinions. Because I say, something's not rigor as if it's all the same mindset, um, and the same lived experience. So I think that the springtime for us to really implement has to be a multifaceted representation of CHS's student and school population, uh, or student and staff population, excuse me, to really unpack what perceptions of AP have been, who has been historically allowed to go in, who feels the barriers are hitting them the most. And what are things that just don't necessarily represent AP? Like, what has no bearing? And teachers, I didn't include this in the slide, but with staff, we asked them, what are the top reasons to be taking an AP course? The bottom three all have been, and this is national portfolio, GPA, test score, pre-rex every single time. And oftentimes, policy is reflecting GPA, test scores and pre-rex. And so there's a lot of just diving into what we've been doing and does this actually reflect the values that we are trying to um, illustrate and provide for our students, particularly the ones who are the most vulnerable and marginalized who are black and brown.
Thank you. Um, this is now for me and I'm pretty sure that my question is more appropriate for either Dr. Freeman or Dr. Taylor. So I will save it. Um, and, and for another time, we're also right at seven twenty-nine. Um, so definitely to keep it going, I'm going to ask my colleagues if they have additional questions to send those over to, uh, Board Member Siders, who will collect them and then get them out to, um, Dr. Taylor, Dr. Freeman and EOS as necessary. Okay?
Uh, President Joshua, may I ask this question? I think it's really pertinent and, and while Jessica is here. Um, it, it, and the question is, what training is being provided to counselors in the middle and the high school to promote a shift in the conversations that they're having with students around honors, AP and college admission? And listening to Board Member Siders and Board Member Tellus for it, I think that may be a key. Uh, in terms of, you know, we're talking about teachers, teachers, teachers. Uh, I think counselors uh, play a critical uh, role in terms of the conversations that they have with students. Uh, and maybe some type of parenting center type of thing, but we know if kids are encouraged from early on that it's a natural process and because they're not, I think this is a, 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 a key kind of issue. What do you think about that?
Well, I will say, while your school district is wonderful, I am not an employee, so I will keep my uh, perspective on that, um, and pass to and in Dr. Freeman for additional context and thought. But what I will say, this is brought up a lot, um, particularly in a lot of school districts where, you know, for K through twelve or where there's just like a small number of elementary, middle and high schools where there's kind of more of that continuum. Um, I think that in order, I think that an actual philosophy and theory regarding honors and AP can't just start in high school. I think it is up to the district of what um, mindset work and policies want to be in place. And I know it is often a very complex thing to do. Um, when there, some districts have had a history of tracking and had a history um, of essentially giving black and brown kids from a very early age out of advanced courses. So I believe that is important. I believe that the district and we definitely can support and collaborate on it of what are ways to um, really make sure that there is a understanding of how important it is for students from the get-go. I taught elementary school, second and third grade, so I get it of really truly students feeling from the beginning of their academic careers that they should be able to go after any academic um, opportunity that comes their way or that is present within their district. And as a public school, that is a right. So I believe that is very important and I would be very excited to work with the districts on hearing their thoughts and theories and what are ways to support students. Um, because that is uh, quite a lift if it is only one part of the district compared to it being um, shared throughout.
I, I'll, I'll just say this, that um, the counseling department at the high school has been heavily involved in this process. Um, and, and while equal opportunity schools does not formally work with um, middle schools, uh, we have talked pretty extensively with Jess about bridging that and bringing teachers and counselors into the conversation. So we can really focus on building that foundation at the middle level. And then when that transition happens to ninth grade, it's uh, it's more seamless and students are aware, more aware of opportunities coming into high school. So those conversations have happened. We're, we're kind of brainstorming right now how that can look um, with our middle school staff and our counseling department. Uh, and, and that's something that we have earmarked for our continued partnership moving forward. But that, that's a conversation that we've had and we even came to Jess asking if we could formally do something with our middle schools. And at the time, um, equal opportunity schools does not formally work at the middle level.
And middle school team for my first training were present um, for the school launch, which from what I heard was overwhelmingly positive. Um, and so things like that, for example, of them coming to training is something that we can definitely do.
Dr. Taylor.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, thank you for just a fantastic presentation and all the work that you've been doing with our team this year. We've had a chance to have conversations with other members of your team. And uh, you know, one of the most recent ones, we were talking about middle school connections and just wanted to remind the board members, for those who who may not recall, we did share a really deep dive into the review of our journey through access and equity. And part of that journey did focus a lot on middle schools and it focused a lot on our expansion of the conversations that our parents have as they enter middle school and as they enter high school. And some of the, some of the unintended benefits, and there are only a few from COVID is that it's really expanded our footprint for those parental conversations. The, the middle school math nights and the course selection uh, events have had a lot more parents participating because they don't have the barriers of attending it um, because of their own, um, you know, uh, life that happens to all of us, right? So we're, we're ecstatic about that. And I also wanted to just to share with the board members, we, we will collect and give you a memo just regarding um, some of the, some of the challenges that we have with the survey for students. Just so that you have a clear picture of, of what occurred and how we're planning to make it better. But I am um, really excited to see the, the increased trajectory um, in those areas of enrollment that we have all been concerned about and discussed uh, over the previous few years. So thank you again for your partnership and we are, I think, all signed up for next year to continue this partnership and support, in support of Columbia High School and the students that we serve. So thank you.
We're excited to partner with you.
Thank you, Jessica. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Right. Back to you, um, Board Member Siders.
Okay. Um, and Dr. Freeman, I believe we have next, uh, Mr. Mano from Columbia High School Art Department. Music, art, fine arts?
Yes, we have our uh, district K to twelve fine arts supervisor, Mr. Mano, who is going to be sharing an overview of uh, something that is near and dear to our district as well, um, all the work that we've done in fine arts this year. And uh, I know Mr. Mano has strict marching orders from myself that we need to keep it brief this evening because of our hard stop at eight thirty. So, Mr. Mano, no pressure, but I'm turning it over to you.
Good evening, uh, Board President, Board Members, uh, Dr. Taylor and, and esteemed colleagues. Thank you for joining us. Um, I'm just going to actually start my stopwatch, Doctor, for your stay on time. Um, I wanted to paint a picture of what we've been doing and tell a story. So let me see if I can um, share a screen and see if that'll work. Share. Are you seeing?
Not yet.
Okay, indicated to me that it is sharing.
There you go. There you go.
It just needs to be uh, presented.
It couldn't just be my.
Yep, hit it in presentation.
Thank you.
And you're good to go.
Be, um, just my internet is a little slow out here. I'm gonna have to move through different screens, so I'm just going to pop out of this.
Mr. Mano, would you like me to?
Get back to another page.
You send it to me?
Are you going to see the full screen?
Yes.
Yes.
See it now.
Okay, let's keep going and then I'll, I'm gonna need to use some other pages and search some data. Um, but the theme tonight and the story tonight is really sort of thriving versus uh, surviving. And we know that as a arts community, not just in our district, but in the state and in the, in the nation, that uh, the virtual environment had really put us in more of a, a surviving mode in terms of what the arts are meant to do and meant to be. And so coming out of COVID and trying to get back to our thriving place uh, has been wonderful in terms of in person in the classroom. And then truly taking that work that's happening in person in classroom uh, to where we really thrive, which are the art exhibition halls, the uh, theater stages and the concert halls. And so, uh, that said, the transition back started in the summer of two thousand twenty-one and trying to bring us back to a thriving place. Uh, and thanks to Esther, uh, Esther Money and uh, board approval and uh, CNI approval and Dr. Taylor. We were able to start what I said was more of an icing on the cake, which was have a summer music enrichment program um, to get those students that had learning loss, especially the beginner students um, who are in fifth grade that had to deal with everything virtually for the first time while they're holding instruments. Um, to, to a place again where they could try to at least have that one-on-one and that personal uh, experience with a teacher and instrument and, and other peers because playing an ensemble is so important. And so the summer program we offered band strings and vocal music sessions um, for students entering grade six through entering grade twelve. We had sixty-three students on the roster in the morning and forty-four students on the afternoon roster, which quickly changed as many day we were able to accommodate that. Forwarded to the fall, um, COVID protocols at the beginning of this year was pace, which quickly was a barrier to uh, some of the activities that we wanted to do. And even some of the curricular activities, which included things like um, having those elementary school choruses in person and those quarter classes. People were concerned. People were concerned. The data, national data, the state data, so that people could feel a little more at ease. But, you know, everyone was in place and we tried to operate that on a comfort level. So. We started out with summer enrichment and then what we also did. Some support in our middle school program to really focus on those students that lost learning in terms of the fifth grade students going to sixth grade and those younger students. And so we had some really wonderful, successful moments between September to now that I kind of wanted to. As a part time band teacher and Miss Wilson. But they do. What I asked them to do was to track the progress in detail of those students so that we could really get a good sense of the progressive value of what was being done in these learning. So. You can see that back in January. We have really detailed notes about what was happening in seventh grade in this one particular class, this one particular session. And then a rating system of how students are doing. And then to my right, if I can get there. Is a video of the student playing so you could actually hear the child and how they're doing. So that's not working, but let's go to the string one because I do want to show you that. The same thing, we have a track for each student. Date here and links videos, et cetera. And then coming down to all the way to three thirty and some of the lengths. So if we looked at a student. Over here. See if I can go back to stop sharing and then share a different screen.
Dr. Taylor, while we wait, do we know if they're, are we going to see student videos here? I just want to be careful. Do we have any privacy concerns, Ms. Butler or Dr. Taylor?
I don't believe we do. We're not broadcasting them, you know, on television or anything like that. I think we're okay. This is our own internet and the, and you know, our students, part of their backpack when they join is their consent. So we should be okay. Ms. Butler, do you have a difference of opinion?
If you're talking, you're muted, Ms. Butler.
I couldn't get to my unmute. I I am a little bit concerned about this. I don't know the context of which these videos were done and I don't know about the consents that were signed. So I'm putting the caution out there. If it would be something that would be covered by the consents that were signed, then I'm fine. And because we are publishing this as by virtue of it being a board meeting.
Yeah.
I'm putting that out there.
Well, you know what? Why don't we just? Air on a side of caution. Yeah, we'll air on the side of caution and what we can do, Mr. Mano. If you provide links for this, we can give the links to the board members and share it with them as well. And they can watch it in a more private setting. We'll go.
Sure, that's fine. Thank you.
Yep.
So this is the, this is the chart so you can see. And what really helps franchise anyone that kind of sees this work is hearing it, right? Because that's how the arts are. You have to see the visual art. You have to hear the music. And so you can see there's tremendous progress if you get an opportunity to listen between when we started and where a student has ended up today, just tremendous progress. And we're thrilled about how that's going right now. And so then the next piece that we're looking at, and I hope you can see this, is I have been following the attrition since two thousand nineteen and the and the participation enrollment and the rates. So I have been putting together reports annually and just kind of following where we're going. And so you can see that because of the COVID situation, we had a loss here of participants in the fifth grade. And that now that we have returned, we've starting to recover that and bring it back to fifty eight percent of the entire fifth grade. So that, you know, that could also mean that fifth graders or people, families moved down, we lost numbers. But we were at four hundred and fourteen enrolled back in two thousand nineteen, twenty. And so this kind of initiative really does help in terms of bringing those rates back and making up for the attrition pieces. If we come down here, you can see in fifth grade, sixth grade, attrition to sixth through ninth and just the different grade levels in terms of schools from elementary to middle to high school, how that's going. And then we see that the numbers for band in two thousand nineteen, right? One ninety eight, moving to one eighty two, rolling over to fifty three at the high school. And there's this natural attrition rate that happens. The concern was right, it became larger because we lost numbers. And so this affected the overall program. And then two thousand twenty one to twenty two, we are starting to try to grow those numbers back. And so we met as a department to figure out how to do that. And we came up with a really good plan for next year, which includes asking for the growth piece also from these part time teachers to make them full time teachers. So that what can actually happen is the middle school teachers, the high school teachers and the elementary teachers can shift based on their specialty. So if they have a specialty in brass, they can teach one day at another school and then go back to their home school the next day and service all the students at the highest level and have this rotation across schools without disrupting any scheduling, without disrupting any other classes. It's just a shift of expertise moving to different buildings. And I did have an opportunity to invite one of our teachers here tonight, Todd Van Beveren, who teaches strings at the high school, just to talk thirty seconds to sixty seconds briefly about what he's noticed in terms of implementing these part time teachers and the plan that we have, if we can grow it to full time positions and how that's been affecting not only the middle school programs, but what he sees in terms of the high school program down the line. Todd, are you with us?
Guys, hear me?
I can, yes.
It's pretty low. Speak up.
Better. I'm a little closer. Turn me better?
Maybe if you turn your camera off, but put the mic to your to your ear, it might be a little bit louder. You're coming in pretty low.
How's that?
Speak as loudly as you can with that voice you have, Todd.
Okay, I could do that. Are you guys hearing me better now?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you guys for having me. I really appreciate it. I was gonna actually try to teach you how to hold a bow. But since I don't have video, it's gonna be sort of hard to do. So one of the things I noticed when I went down to the middle school this year. Bow technique is such an important thing. And it's one of the first things we teach when I do Suzuki, even with kindergarten kids. There's a hundred different exercises we do to get the kids comfortable with holding a bow. Most of the time you'll see in a in a normal year, in sixth grade and in fifth grade, you're lucky if about thirty five percent of the kids have mastered a bow hold. And you'll still see kids up in the high school that won't have mastered a bow hold. So you're looking twenty five to thirty five percent is a good year when we start kids. It's such a difficult thing to do. It's such an uncomfortable position for your hand. And everybody is at different places with their development as far as eye hand coordination goes. When I went down to the middle school this year to MMS, I was amazed that here we are, I went down in February, that even though all of these students were taught virtually, so there was no way that a hand could be adjusted, any kind of physical movement could be done for that hand. We were at sixty five percent of the kids holding, not only holding the bow correctly, but playing with proper bow technique. This is this is that next step that you might see two years, three years down the line for an advanced student. That's practicing consistently at home. Here we're seeing it in sixth grade, a sixth grade that should have been struggling because of virtual instruction. And we had sixty five percent holding the bow properly and playing with perfect bow technique, which means that they're moving from the elbow to the wrist as they bow, not using the whole arm, which is a very difficult thing to do. And, you know, the biggest change that I see, because I was very concerned, you know, how are we going to, especially now that we're doing pullout lessons during the rehearsal? How is this going to be as successful as it's been when we've had time pulling out of academics before? And here we go. The big change was that part time teacher that we added this year. Because we have now someone that can, during rehearsal, rather than pulling out academically, can really help those kids focus on that kind of technique. And that's going to make them successful. That's going to make it fun to play. That's going to make them want to keep playing. That's the key. And, you know, I was just amazed that, you know, not only do we have great teachers, but the impact now of having two teachers teaching that level and being able to really focus on the technique was a game changer. I can't put in any any more of an emphasis on it and I was excited.
Thank you, Todd, so much for your time and your testimony about that. It's very important to get that firsthand information so much. We appreciate your. And because of time constraints, I just kind of want to move through these quickly. Another piece in terms of this surviving to thriving theme tonight for the arts was it really moved me, you know, to see how passionate our students were, even in the thriving, surviving mode, to go into garages, into other homes and really want to get together and play. And then, you know, the effect that it had on so many of our students emotionally that I wanted to kind of get the student perspective and teacher perspective of the contrast between surviving and thriving. And so I was compelled to write an achieve grant, administrative achieve grant and bring in a wonderful professional in our town, Sean McCourt, who's a producer of a magic show from the Falls, to work with our students or home students at high school. To sort of create a documentary, a short documentary that the arts are back and get that student perspective. Mr. McCourt is here tonight just to say a few words about what he's been doing, working with the student. We actually have a sizzle reel that that looks amazing. I'd love to show you guys. But again, I think based on that last conversation, we can share the sizzle reel with the board later. Is that right, Dr. Taylor?
Yes, sir. That's correct. We will make sure.
James, just so you know, I do have signed permission from the three students and the three educators that are in that. So that one is that one is good to go. It's covered.
Is that okay, doctor? Let's show this because it really.
Thank you.
Every way that this school does art, it feels like we recognize now the gift that it is.
COVID can't shut down a whole show. Like, it's not that serious. I'm so sorry to tell you.
Say again, Sean?
It's not coming through. It's, do you want me to try? I've got a better internet connection here.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm gonna try the same thing, if I may. Hi, everybody. Can share a screen? Well, I'll tell you what, that's, we're not, we're just not able to see it, James. So let me just quickly tell you, tell you folks what it is and we'll send you that link. What we've done, James has written the grant for us. We've gotten the arts, the the video program at the school involved with the choir, the orchestra, the band, the marching band, special dance and the musical. And the idea is to bring all of these elements together in one documentary. And James, we're, I'm teaching the kids how to, I'm working with the kids to go full cycle production from the client order through ideation, post-production, production, writing and promotion. So we started with all of the classes, ideating what this could be. We would let down, we've got a volunteer corps of about, I think, James, about twenty five, is that right?
Yep.
Yeah, and and we we took all of their ideas, put them into one thing. What you're seeing here on James's screen are some images from the from the shoot. We are telling the story of the importance of arts through COVID. And I can tell you Todd Van Beveren is a key player in this as well. He says incredible, well done and passionate things about this. I echo what he says about the importance of these part time teachers and what a measurable effect. I just came moments ago from the marching band open house. The measurable effect of these teachers, I was talking to one of them tonight on these kids. You're gonna see it in this video. We are right now in post-production. It is largely shot. We're going to, it's going to be scored by the music department, recorded by Emily White, who is our teacher of music tech and Paul Montiano, who is our video teacher. And all of these kids are going to get to be part of something. I know you're gonna love it and we're very proud of it. And I hope you will take, it's ninety seven seconds. If you've got ninety seven seconds later tonight, click on this link that James will show you and you'll see what we're all about. And thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much, Sean. We appreciate that. And phenomenal work you're doing with our young people at the high school. We really appreciate that. And finally, since you spoke a little bit about AP tonight, I wanted to take to highlight the most recent art exhibition in the Columbia High School gallery. Do feel free to come by and see it, which is our AP art. Show. Let me just pull that up. While I pull these images, we have our AP art teacher here tonight. Maynard, Mr. Maynard, can you say a few words about the exhibit and the process?
Um, yes, absolutely. So my students recently put up their work in the Domrecy Gallery in Columbia High School. And it's basically a combination of what they've been working on during the year. Specifically, their sustained investigation in preparation for the college board exam, where they're creating work that are, is all dealing with topics around a single sustained investigation or a single inquiry question, which is how professional artists work. And so students are going through the process. Of course, they start first with their selected works and building up work from observation and then later on they get to come into their own and create work based on an inquiry question. So they're building bodies of work in the, in their actual, in their actual show. And it just helps them, not just for the exam, but it's also good for them to get an idea of what it means to actually be a practicing artist, especially for the students who are interested in going into art school or going into fine arts or graphic design majors when they get to college.
Thank you so much, doctor. A couple more spots. Join us. The the presentation really is focused on. Entry, middle and high school. But I am two minutes over based on the time. Doctor, it's really important that you hear not only from me, but from some of our people we're working with because I do believe collaboration is key. So. Thank you for your time and I will share those links so you can view them at your leisure.
Thank you, Mr. Mano. And just for those board members who may not have been on the board last spring, as we were preparing for COVID recovery, I want to just thank you for supporting the proposal that was put forward to have these two part time teachers. We had a lot of conversation around what the impact could be from just having two part time additional music teachers. I think that you've seen from what Mr. Mano shared that it was very impactful and we are carrying forward with that again in our budget. So thank you, board members, for supporting that recommendation. Now, Dr. Friedman and chair siders, back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Okay, we're gonna turn it over to, I think I saw her, Ms. Bedeen in special services. There you are.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you. So my first topic for this evening is just to talk about some of our new hires. We are happy to say that we have hired a new special education teacher at the high school for English Language Arts. And we have our new BCBA coming on board later this month. So we're really happy for those, for those new hires. We do still have a number of positions that we're looking to fill and we're either using substitutes or we're using in some situations, sixth period teaching with some of our teachers who were willing to, you know, pick up those vacancies. We also have a couple people that are pending. sixth period teaching with some of our teachers who were willing to, you know, pick up those vacancies. We also have a couple people that are pending for hire. So hopefully some of those positions will be filled in the very near future. So those are our vacancies and new hires. Um, regarding professional development and trainings that have been going on, um, since we last met, our special ed teachers have been engaging in the language living training, which, um, you know, gave them training in the program, gave them their resources. The teachers were able to get everything set up and get their benchmark assessments set up for the program. And then they'll be using that information and that curriculum moving forward to, um, discuss student progress and PLCs and so forth. We also are engaging in handle with care training this week. So we'll come out at the end of the week with um, some trainers in each of the schools, hopefully, and have some staff trained in handle with care or recertified, um, if it's that time of year for them. Also, our, um, first year pre-K teachers are just now finishing up the last of the professional development in the curriculum series. And we were happy to hear from the curriculum developers that, um, the teachers really have made excellent progress when they've gone into the classroom to observe and work on coaching. They were very, very pleased with the progress that they've seen, um, with those teachers engaging in that professional development. Our community-based instruction program has been able to, uh, get out more now that the weather is starting to be nice and um, there's more opportunities to go out. They've been out more and they're now focusing on the, um, postal service, the US Postal Service. And, um, you know, what happens with that in the local community. And this month, of course, is, um, Autism Acceptance Month. And all of our schools are engaging in a variety of different activities across the district. So many of the schools have newsletters that have addressed um, autism awareness. They have special morning announcements that are going on. Most of our schools are engaging in spirities to focus on this particular month and different topics that go with that. Most schools are having videos or read-alongs that are intended to spark discussions about understanding autism, individual differences, acceptance, kindness, and friendship. They're highlighting famous people with autism. Many of the schools have interactive bulletin boards focusing on the topic. They're looking at different songs that focus on celebrating autism. And then there's a variety of different special activities going on in the classrooms. Lesson plans and special resources that the teachers are utilizing, um, to focus on autism awareness with their students. And at Psalms, the CBI class, um, sold autism awareness T-shirts and they're encouraging um, anyone who purchased those T-shirts to wear that as a part of their spirit week on Friday. So those are some of the different activities that we have going on this month for autism awareness. Any questions? Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Board President Joshua?
Uh, just one quick one. The handle with care training, um, other parents being trained as well.
Okay, so this particular training focuses on getting our trainers recertified so that we can do our internal training. And then we identify whoever we feel needs the training. And that might be, uh, paraprofessional teachers, administrators, counselors, nurses, whoever, you know, we feel needs that training, then, you know, throughout the year, we certify whomever we feel we need with our internal trainers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, board member siders, um, access and equity. Do you just want me to take that or?
Sure.
Um, all we have down here is just, uh, just to announce that our new assistant superintendent, Dr. Kevin Gilbert, um, is going to be starting on May sixteenth, I believe. Dr. Taylor, is that accurate? I believe that-
Yeah. He actually just texted me because he's going to be in town on the eleventh as he's transitioning and doing some of the, some of the transitional pieces that we have to do when we come to the state of New Jersey. And I just wanted to just, you know, emphasize that your entire first presentation, right, who opportunity schools is under the umbrella of access and equity, like everything that we do, right? So even though I know that we, we, we try to carve out some specificity on the updates, I just love that we're getting to the point where a CNI update isn't access and equity update, right? A special services update isn't access and equity update. So, yeah, we're excited, um, that he's going to be joining us very soon and he is staying in touch. And I also, he also was a part of our board meeting, um, last Monday when we did the intentional integration, uh, presentation. He's able to take part in that, um, as an observer. And just, um, one last update on that. Uh, we were, the letters, as I told the board, I believe, in email, uh, the, the placement letters went out to the, you know, close to five hundred rising sixth graders. We received right now maybe five or six inquiries uh, from various questions from parents that we are responding to and, um, getting those responses to them as soon as possible. And it's really going well. That is all.
Okay, board member siders, turn it back over to you. Policy?
Uh, yes. All right, uh, let's see. I, I did send out an email over the weekend with just, um, some of my notes during the review of the policies that we have for first read.
Excuse me, board members. I'm sorry. Approvals is next. Are there any approvals?
I'm sorry?
Approvals was the next thing.
Oh, approvals.
So I just wanted to know if there were any before-
Board President Joshua, we actually, um, we thought we were going to have those approvals ready. We're going to wait till May for all those approvals.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we have five policies up for first read. And, um, I did provide just some, some notes from things of, things that I noticed while I was reviewing the policies. Um, so I'm just going to call out a few items that, that I just wanted us to discuss. Um, the policy for student assessment is two, six, two, two. Um, in my notes, I, I noted that this used to be a six-page policy, is now going to be a one-page policy. But some of the items that are being removed are around the opt-out language, the public reporting of the assessment results and the parent guardian, guardian notification of assessments. I felt like these were probably items that we would want to keep in our policy. Um, so I, I just want to make sure that everyone is aware that Strauss Esme removed that or, you know. And I'm not sure, I can't say that Strauss Esme removed it. I know sometimes we do customize our policies and it's a good possibility that the last time we reviewed it was customized. Um, but to me, those are important things that we want to keep in our policy. Uh, board member Mal Spina?
Okay, sorry, trying to find the mute button. Um, I agree with you. Those are important parts that I feel like we have to have involved. Um, I know that there is a little something with the, like, the new test that they're doing for, uh, eleventh graders or that eleventh grade high school thing, which you really can't opt out. But for everything that we can, I believe we have to, we should be putting something in allowing that to occur. And, um, I'll let our parents know about that. And also just in general, everything you've said. So I would like to echo your concerns about that.
Yep. Board, I'm sorry, board member Vlad Nama.
Uh, thanks. So I mean, as I'm reading this policy, I mean, pretty much every section in here is referring to a state policy, which this is subordinate to. So my question really is, do we even need this policy? Because every statement here is in accordance to NJSA Act. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, everything sounds like according to the NJ State Act, we need to do this. So then why have a policy if we're just following the NJ State Act?
Can I?
I, I can just share from my perspective. Um, I, you know, you, you hate to become a compliance, um, you know, organization, but part of this is compliance, right? By the board accepting the policy, you are confirming that you have acknowledged and put into place this law. But I would, I would again yield to, to the solicitor on that. And we can always get further guidance from the county, um, office.
No, no, no. This is a mandated policy.
Yeah.
Okay. So I mean, we can say that as for these twenty different statutes, we agree. Thank you. Move on. Right? I mean, maybe you're making it complicated, five pages, ten pages, whatever we accept. That's all we're saying, right? Anyway, I, I will defer to people who've done this more long, longer than I have. But it just seems to me that, you know, we have way too much language in here for something that all we're saying is we agree with the state.
It, it doesn't work like that.
Why not?
Because they're mandatory stuff that needs to go into these policies as Ms. Butler stated. So, and I mean, I'll defer to Ms. Bergen, who's on the committee, but, uh, being a member of the policy committee, I can tell you there are certain things in language that has to be in these policies and we just can't be like, we agree with the state. There's reasons why the policies are written the way they are and
maybe at a certain, maybe at a later point, I'd like to find out why they're written the way they are. That's fine. We don't need to talk about it now, but it just seems to me it's superfluous. Thanks.
Thank you. I think, yeah, let's, I, I would just say, you know, um, Strauss Esme does do a lot of that for us, right? So they're the ones, so we're not actually writing these. We're, we've contracted that service for that. And to do a lot of the reading and it's ensuring that what is in the policy is aligned with the state and compliance with the state. So, um, all right, back to you.
Okay. And this policy, uh, does have a regulation that needs to be updated as well. Um, we have a new anti-hazing policy. I, it has to do with Timothy J. Piazza's law, which went into effect in March first of this year. I believe I included a link to that law. Um, but this policy did not exist before. There is one section that I believe we have to check off, um, in regards to what the policy applies to. So it's high school, middle school, or elementary school. I think for us it is high school and middle school. And I believe elementary school was for K to eight districts. But if we want to apply it for all three, I think we could also do as well. Uh, another policy that's being revised is prevention and treatment of sports-related concussions and head injuries. This policy is being updated to include the, the more current concussion protocols per the CDC. Uh, it also requires the district to have a head injury safety training program. And it also provides clarification about what type of student athletes are impacted. It clarifies language. It used to say athletes and cheerleader, and now it just says athletes. This one also has regulations that need to be updated and reviewed by the district physician. And I couldn't find the regulations on the district website. Uh, student surveys, analysis or and/or evaluations. This was a policy we updated in September twenty twenty-one. Strauss Esme has recommendations. Uh, they've included a definition section that wasn't there before. They've provided clarification on student rights, on the right to opt out, on exceptions and the rights for violation of PPR, which I can't remember what it stands for, but it is, it's, it's defined in the policy. And the last one is the high school graduation policy. We last updated this policy in October twenty twenty-one. Strauss Esme is making recommendations to include, um, the recommendations are including requirements for students of the classes of twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. I believe our old policy, uh, was for requirements for students up to class twenty twenty-two. There is a, a write-in slash optional section on page five that we may have to fill out. Uh, page ten has section six, which details, um, that we need to do a public readout of student graduation data. And, um, and in that section, it included not only information on our graduation rates, but also on, there are different types of, let's see. Um, there are different types of assessments that students have to take to graduate. So this public readout includes how many students, um, graduated using the portfolio appeals process versus, um, one of the graduation testing requirements. Total number of students, students who graduated. Number of students who received a state-endorsed high school diploma as a result of meeting alternative requirements. Um, total number of students denied graduation from the twelfth grade class. So it, this was in our policy before, but I just want to kind of point it out for anyone who's looking at this policy for the first time, that we do have to do this public readout, really drilling down on that graduation data. Uh, there is an optional by literacy section, which, um, that's possibly new. I couldn't find in the old policy. The last item is, we have some, our old policy has some CHS-specific items that are not part of the Strauss Esme template. So I want to make sure that we get these items back into the policy that was pages sixteen and seventeen. I know one was about the robotics class that we have that, um, I believe it allows students to use that class for the, uh, I can't remember if it's the fine arts or if it's the career readiness requirement. And of course, uh, um, yeah. There was also a section on, um, the principal's option to credit review committee. So there are some things that I think we need to review and make sure that those particular items, whether or not they, they belong in a new policy. I think that was it.
Chair siders, last night in the polit, in the policy committee, I believe it was agreed upon that the CNI leadership would take a, a closer look at that with the high school folks, just to, just to, and then bring it back, circle back around. And again, I think that one of the other concerns was that some may perceive a change right now in the graduation policy as impacting the pending graduates for the next two months. But of course, as you stated, it's not, it does not. It will, it will not. So, but yeah, that, that, that was a takeaway that we had from, uh, from the policy committee last evening. And we did that handover, uh, during SLT today.
Okay, great. So just one more thing. I know we're kind of out of sorts this month because policy met last night and we're meeting now. Um, but I, I was thinking that since this is a meeting with, with the full board, that we can still move these policies forward for first read this month. If anyone has feedback for these five policies, get them to me and I will document them. I think that's it.
Sorry. Thank you. Um, and thank you, chair siders. Um, I just wanted to ask if we are going to, I guess we're going to hold the graduation policy to, to sort through it, but is the student assessment policy something we, we plan to get ready for first read? Or will that take a little more time also to add those things back in? The opt-out and that kind of thing?
Okay, so maybe we, we hold back that one and the graduation and we move forward with the hazing, the survey, and the concussion?
That's good with me. Or I, I don't know how much is involved in, in, um, you know, revising the student assessment one, but.
I don't think that there'll be a lot there, but let's just take our time to make sure because it is a pretty important one. And even though, even though that, you know, opt-out is kind of a, you know, not a word the state uses a lot anymore.
Yes.
They're still, it still happens. It still happens. You know, it still happens.
Okay. So we'll plan on three going, the
Okay.
anti-hazing, concussions, and the student surveys and analysis and evaluations.
That sounds good.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, that's all that I have. Uh, Dr. Friedman, do you have anything else?
No, that is, uh, that's it. Eight twenty-one. It's pretty good. Hmm, no, that is, uh, that's it. 8:21. It's pretty good.
Okay. Thank you, um, Dr. Friedman and Board Member Siders. I will now move on to new business. Is there any new business this evening? Board Member Malaspina?
I mean, I'm not sure, well, I'm not in finance, but, um, I, I would like to express my concern that there doesn't seem to be anything still in the budget for us. Um, social emotional supports, um, and that I really would like us to think about adding some more resources and doing what we can to help these children who are greatly suffering right now. And, um, uh, I know we are going, coming up on a budget vote soon. And I'm hoping that we can look at a way to add something in before that time period. I don't know if that's for CNI or for here, since it's sort of both. Throw that out there.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
Thank you for that thoughtful recommendation, Board Member Malaspina. I would just give one clarification that, um, I, I don't think you meant to say that there are, there are no funds in here for that amount. I think that what you were re.
Additional funds.
Additional rights, just for the public record.
I, I didn't mean to say no funds. I meant, you were right. I meant to say any additional funds.
Thank you, thank you. And, um, uh, the statement that I made previously was just that even, even though these were just from our previous presentations this evening, right? Those pieces that have been presented were a part of the additional funds put aside, right? The, the EOS piece, the, um, even the additional music teachers, we put those forward last year as that. And, um, my concern was that we're still in this school year and we still have not implemented everything that we had planned on because some of them are paced out to happen in the spring. So, I would just like to see those things come to fruition before we begin to add on more. Um, there's a lot that's been added, additional mental health providers at our schools. We have, uh, Challenge Day coming up at the middle schools and high schools for multiple days in the next month or so. Just a lot of things that we put in place. Ms. Boden, you have something there?
I, I just wanted to add also, um, I just create, you'll be actually getting information on it for the next board meeting. But I just had, uh, created the amendment to Title IV funding that we received carryover for. And it is directly connected to, um, our middle school, uh, middle school and I believe high school, um, social emotional learning. Um, and tomorrow, actually, I have a group of administrators and teachers coming together to review a, a possible, um, program that we're looking at. That is, it's, I have looked through it and I've met with somebody from the company and thought it was, it was pretty impressive. And I'm going to, um, look at, we'll be looking at some more things. So, um, Dr. Friedman and I set up some meetings and, um, actually tomorrow's the first one. We want to see what's out there and what we can do for our students, so.
Yeah, we had someone actually reach out this afternoon. Dr. Taylor shared some information. So, I'm in the process of getting back to them as well. So, there, there are definitely other resources out there. We're just, we need to vet and review them and then see how they can possibly be implemented and fit in with everything else that we're doing.
And I think that, well, I'm sorry. I was going to just share that part of our, yeah, just, I'm sorry to interrupt. Just, I wanted to just put one more bow on that, that, you know, part of our intentional integration work, we've been talking with our middle school principals just about preparing, right, for that, that there are going to be some kids coin places that they didn't expect to go and, and, you know, having additional layers of mental health support for them that we can fund outside of our normal, you know, taxable budget. So, um, thank you for, for that update and, 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 and that.
But I, I guess my concern is that we're not just.
Well, hold on, I want to get, Board Member Siders has her hand up, so I want to get her to chime in first. Thank you.
Uh, perhaps at the, the next CNI meeting, we can also talk about, um, I think his name is Mr. Fidelity. And, um, I believe we, we approved a three-year contract for that mental health support. So, maybe we can talk about year two. And I, I know he specifically had some items around student harm and, and, and how to support that, how to identify those issues.
Actually, we have a, an appointment with him, a, a meeting with him and our, um, building staff to look at next year and see if there are things that we want to move around. You know, we knew going into first year that we, we had our plan. I mean, we accomplished everything that we wanted to do. But then we want, we do want to look every year at what our plan is for the next year so that we can make sure that we're meeting the needs of what is in front of us at the moment. So, we already have that scheduled. He is ready and willing to do whatever it is that we need and will give us a lot of, uh, recommendations as to what he even feels we should be doing. So, I don't want to do this in, I, I don't think we want to do this solely on our own. We need to have the experts helping us along the way.
Yeah, we were in contact, um, since last week. We were having pretty in-depth conversations with him since last week. And so, um, a, as Anne mentioned, that, you know, while we had a three-year scope and sequence, we knew, you know, year, year two and, and year three would definitely be revised based off of the progress and, and our needs moving forward. So, um, we feel pretty good with what we've accomplished in year one. But we know that we need to move some things around and, um, talk to him about some additional resources and, and putting some things in place. So, that's all in the works, as Anne mentioned.
Thank you. Any other new business this evening? All right, seeing none, I'll close the business and I'd like to make the following notion, motion, excuse me. Board of Education will be in executive session Monday, April 18th, 2022, in the superintendent's office of 525 Academy Street, as well as using, utilizing an online video conference platform to discuss personnel, legal negotiations, and other matters. After that, the board will be, after the executive session, the board will be in a public session Monday, April 18th, 2022 at 7:30 PM in the district meeting room at 525 Academy Street in Maplewood, as well as using, utilizing an online video conference platform. Action will be taken. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Siders. All in favor? All right, that place to be known, Mr. Grosso. Um, I'd like to adjourn this meeting at 8:29 Tuesday, April 5th, 2022. And I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss, uh, legal matters. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Siders. All in favor? All right, thanks, everyone. Uh, see you in executive session. Have one full evening. Take care.
SLT, you're free to go. Thank you.